I'd like to bring to order the town meeting, the Water Pollution Control Authority and regular town council meeting of North Branford, Connecticut, October 5th at 7:05. Salute the flag.
(Inaudible).
Mayor Big Leone is absent. Deputy Mayor Zampano?
Here.
Councillor Angeloni?
Here.
Councillor Diamond?
Here.
Councillor Downs?
Here.
Councillor Duty is absent. Councillor Fawnan?
Here.
Councillor Code?
Here.
And Councillor Bleachill?
Here.
Thank you. Just before we start, I just want to mention for our speaking guests, anyone who wants to speak tonight, it will be a three-minute limit. It won't be cut and dry at three minutes, but around three minutes, we're just going to tap the gavel. And if you have anything further to add, you can hand it to the town manager or to the recording secretary for the record, and that'll keep our meeting moving. Thank you. Minutes of previous meeting, September 7, 2021, water pollution.
Still moved. Second.
Any discussion? Take a vote.
On favor?
Aye.
Abstain?
Abstain.
Okay. Correspondents' and citizen's statements, says none. Unfinished business, none. New business, none. Any citizen's statements and petitions for the water pollution? Okay. Move on to the regular town meeting. Reports of committees, boards, and commissions, economic development?
They will be having their regular meeting next week, but there is, on page 20 in our packet, there is a report from Roger Solway as to things that have been happening in EDC for the month of September.
Parks and Rec?
Their meeting last week was canceled, and they are actually meeting tonight. So, no report.
Police Commission?
Police Commission will be meeting next week on October 12.
Fire Commission?
They're meeting this Thursday, the 7th.
Board of Ed and Town Council?
No meeting.
No meeting. Planning and zoning is this Thursday. Finance Subcommittee?
No meeting.
No meeting. So, down to Permanent Project Building Committee, update. North Branford High School and North Branford.
Al's here. Al Rose is behind.
Oh, gotcha.
Al Rose, 40 Valley Road. So, I have a few things to talk about. I'll try and be brief. So, Victor's passing out the architect. He drew up some pictures of the intermediate school with some pitched roofs on them, and he also shows some views of, like, in the middle there, like, the centerfold of that handout has one of the view of the whole campus, and it really ties it in well. And he's not doing pitched roofs on the whole thing, but he is hiding the air conditioning units and doing the first, you know, the gables that are what you see when you drive in. So, we naturally picked that, you know, we picked the most expensive version, which we don't know how much that is. But what, so, all I want you to do is to look at that. We feel as the building committee that it's worth looking at having him have an engineer look at the structure, and it shouldn't be that hard because we just built the school. So, they have good drawings. So, but, so, what we'll do is, we're not hiring anybody tonight. We are, I'm just giving you the update on that, and we're going to have Rusty get a quote from his structural engineer, and I'll come back to you with that to study whether we can do what he drew. So, that's pretty much it on the intermediate school. And also on that project, it looks like there's so much work there that's going to be a two summer job, which that's good because it might give us some time to pay for it. But we do, and then for the town attorney, Rusty was saying that at 15 years old, you can get state money towards, you know, you can start to get state money for a roof. So, in 2023, I think we're 15 years old. I'm not sure of that. That's what we thought. So, I don't know if, maybe we do something, you know, if we can get into 2023 and get some state money, it might be worth it, too. So, that's it for the intermediate school. Did I miss anything on that, Mike?
No.
So, we did, we did give our clerk of the works or owner's rep, we did give them some more work to do from the scope that we had originally had them do. We just felt with our purchasing agent going to retire by next June, as he says, or no later than June, we don't want to be in the middle of these projects and have to have somebody else come in there and do the paperwork to try and get our money back from the state. So, we have been talking about this for probably three months with them as to what we wanted them to do, what we didn't want them to do, and they, in our process, they pointed out some things under Gilbane's contract where all the allowance money and, like, the things that are wild in the contract were all in their possession, and they did a good job getting it back in our possession. So, you know, there was quite a bit of money there that is unknown for things that are allowances, but if, believe me, as a builder, you're not getting your allowance back if you don't already have it. So, that was, that was a good find that they came up with, and were able to negotiate some of that back out of their contract. We're real pleased with them and what they do. So, I know it's more hours that they have, but they were talking five to 10 hours a week, and, you know, at their rate, when they bid the job, it's going to be money well spent. On the, I guess on the, so, the high school, they're going to start, I think, either this week or next week, they'll start on the footings for the building, start the excavation and that. I don't think there was anything else on?
Just the architect, I mean, not the architect, Amar from Gilbane had mentioned to the Permanent Project Building Committee that at this stage of the game, they should, and they're ready to coordinate a groundbreaking ceremony, so to try and coordinate with the Permanent Project Building Committee and the Town Council for, was it mid or late, maybe late October, November?
Late October, early November.
Yeah, that's what he said, yeah. Yeah, late October and November. So, that's where, that's where this is progressing, and so, we certainly can coordinate with the groups and pick a time and the Board of Education in terms of getting, you know, a groundbreaking ceremony.
And then the only other thing is, because, you know, it's really neat being on this side of your calendar, because, you know, I come and beg for money. At the building committee, with Gilbane, with the architect, and with the police architects, I know that you've been, you budgeted the money, and we're looking for an assistant building official for Tom, and I see he's here. Last night, you know, they're all getting nervous that when this thing goes, you know, they're going to, they're going to cruise and not going to be, not going to want to be held up on inspections. We talked with Michael last night. I've talked with Tom for the last few months, and there is nobody out there that's willing to take a part-time building official job. So, we feel as a committee that it might be something that, and you guys have to figure it out, but it might be something where you just go ahead and hire a full-time assistant building official, letting them know that it's a three-year deal, and if Tom retires, there may be a job, and if he doesn't, there probably wouldn't be at the end of the three years. But I think, and I think Tom, and he can speak for it, but I think he feels confident that he can get somebody as a full-time assistant building official, but there is nobody that wants to be a part-time, and I get it. There's, there's nobody to hire anywhere. So, that's what the committee told me when I came here tonight, they just mentioned that to you guys, and hopefully you can figure it out. Thank you.
Thanks, Al.
If I could just, you know, add a little bit more to that, the committee last night did ask, and it's a tough, tough market, and we went out at, you know, $40 an hour, and that's not going to cut it, so we'd have to go significantly higher. But to Tom's point, and talking with Tom Cowell as well, I think there's an opportunity to meet two objectives, and meeting two objectives being the, having the help necessary because we're also, not just the high school, not just the PD, but as you hear, you know, we're essentially going to be undergoing, you know, trying to pull this project off, and that's going to be two, as Al said, two to three, maybe three summers long to get that done. There's going to be a lot of work, so if we can get that objective met by bringing somebody in with the thought of succession planning for the next three years of which these projects are going to go, then I think it could be a seamless transition of sort of an apprenticeship, if you will, or just a seasoning to get somebody to be prepared, to ready to step into Tom's shoes when he leaves. So, it's food for thought because I, I mean, we were just, we're turning over every rock we can to try and find somebody, and we're not, unless we, you know, try to offer 60, 65, or something higher than that to try and get somebody, and it just, you know, for 19 hours, no benefits, I don't think we're going to get anybody to bite.
So, for the next meeting, could you have what the increase in cost would be? Because I know we have money in the budget, so what would it, the additional money that we would need to do it as a full-time position?
Yeah, I'll certainly prepare something and work the numbers with Anthony and bring it back for the 19th. Can you do that?
Would you need to do that as a town employer, or could you do it as a contracted position?
I think it'd be, again, trying to meet the second goal of succession planning. I'd want to bring him in as an employee and do it that way. I think it'd be probably neater, cleaner to do it that way. Not to say it couldn't be done the other way, but it's, I guess, you know, again, it's just more, it's really fresh, coming off of last night's meeting, so I think, you know, giving another, you know, another few days to marinate this and kick it around and come up with a couple scenarios for you and numbers for you for the 19th. Sure, we can do that.
Okay.
And if I could just go, also echo what Al said about the handout that he gave in the commission's meeting last night. There are three options in here, you'll see, but it was pretty quick and unanimous, and I want to speak, Victor's here and Al's here, that they went right to option three, and so that is their unanimous decision last night to go with option three, and as Al said, option two and three need a structural review before you can get some numbers. But I think Rusty did a great job in turning this around pursuant to the request of the council to be able to look at that, and I think he'd be very pleased with that type of scenario if that comes to fruition. That'd be a beautiful campus, absolutely beautiful. So, we'll work on pushing Rusty to get those numbers, hopefully for the 19th.
Thank you. Communication Subcommittee?
The Communications Subcommittee is meeting tomorrow night, well, tomorrow afternoon at 4:30, and also, I think you have a copy in your folder, the posting for the public hearing on the potential tower in Northford.
All right. Town Manager Report?
Yeah, the first item I have is the update on COVID-19, and you have the report in your packet. You see the numbers are obviously trending down from the August numbers, the spike there in August of 90 cases for September, 58, and the trend continues to go. Unfortunately, I am pained to report the fact that there was one fatality in North Branford, 66-year-old female who was vaccinated and was a breakthrough. So, that's, that's the sad news to report on that score, but overall, the numbers are still trending lower than the spike that we had in August. I think I added additional flyers on both the vaccine clinics and also, obviously, the time of year, we're getting into flu clinics as well, so I've added those in the packet for your review. Item B is Smith Library Painting and Town Hall Exterior Ramp Renovation Project. So, the notice there for Smith Library, they're scheduled to begin October 12, be completed by November 1. Smith Library will be closed to the public during this time to ensure the safety of the workers and patrons. The library will close on October 8 to allow staff enough time to move materials, and they'll reopen on November 3. So, that is that bid package for the entire interior painting. So, they'll be offline, and that's the notice we put on the website as well. In addition to Smith Library Painting, Fran and Public Works have been working, well, Fran, working with the architects to design, and you have the design, and I think we put a refreshed copy at your desk this evening for the drawings and renderings of the new ramp and exterior. And part of that process will have a sample, we have three samples here. Fran can take you through what the exterior will look like because there's got to be a decision made on which one you want to go with. So, it's a little show and tell with our director.
Yeah, so, we're slated to start November, very shortly, so we have to make some decisions on the ramp. The stairway is getting changed. We're adding a step to it, so it's going to be a longer, it's going to be a much more comfortable walk up the steps instead of so steep. If you see the picture, I don't have the one you got in front of you, you might give it to me, but you see we put a curved wall on the right side going up, and then there's going to be a wall in the front where that little jog is, to close that off, and then the ramp is, the ramp is basically the same slope and everything, but the whole top is coming off, so all getting all re-done. So, the question is, on the samples you see in front of you, I just picked a couple that I thought were good, that's going to be the veneer on the front of the concrete, so you won't see the concrete foundation anymore, it won't look like it. So, we're trying to dress the thing up a little bit. And also, we're going to do the side of the vault. You know, when you walk in the vault, the foundation's got that step, and it's kind of, it doesn't look finished, so we're going to try to finish it off, stone that, and then we're going to put all the railings on it. And I believe the railings, we're going to go with aluminum railings, powder coated. I'm not sure the color yet.
Is that a railing all the way down the ramp?
Yes, yep. Yeah, then when it gets up to the top where the wall is, they use a wall as the railing, so we're getting rid of it being open. You can see the curve in the stairs when you're walking down, coming down the stairs. Going to be heated, everything's going to be heated.
Stairs and ramp?
I'm sorry?
Stairs and ramp?
Stairs and ramp, yeah.
What's this piece here at the bottom, Fran, in the picture? It looks like a little wall at the bottom of the ramp?
On the right-hand side, looking at it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, the rail, the side railing is obviously, it's all masonry, but you know the little notch out that's in there, the square notch? You got the stairs, and there's like this open area.
Gravel in there, whatever.
We're going to wrap that wall around and butt back in, and then you'll have a little plant and garden there. Put some tulips there. I think that's what you're talking about, right, Al?
Yeah, the little garden at the bottom, kind of?
Yeah, so there'd be a little spot there. Instead of having just a hole there with stone in it, the architect decided to wrap it around. There is another drawing, it shows a wall going all the way down the ramp, but I cut that out and just, we're just going to veneer the foundation of the ramp. And there is a center, there is a center rail now, that we're putting a center rail in. It doesn't show it in this drawing, but there's a center rail going, so instead of having to go to one side or the other, you can walk right up to the middle of the stairs with a railing. Any questions? We're going to be closing the entrance off while we do this. We're not going to leave it open. It's going to be very difficult to keep it open and do the work that we got to do. We're going to take the stairs completely out, so we're going to have it all barricaded off. We're going to use this back entrance as the front entrance to the town hall because it's a ramp, and we're going to work with the parking. I talked to Mike the other day, we're going to make all the parking against the building for the public, move the employees down.
And how long do you anticipate the project taking?
That's a good question. I would say at least three weeks.
That's not bad.
You know, depending on when they start and what problems we find when we start demolishing it. And then what comes to the question is the rest of the sidewalks, but we're going to try to get the ramp and the stairs all done and see what's left over after that, money-wise. So, we need to pick, I was just looking for an opinion on the stone. There's three different stone, I could have brought more, but I didn't feel like carrying them all, but that's the basics. Your choice.
I'm in part.
Any recommendations? No. They're all, you know, they're all, I just, what do you guys want to think? I don't know.
Let Rosa Marie pick it out.
Why?
Only Tara.
Two of them look almost the same, the middle one.
Sorry, Tara. Yeah, you rolled it there.
I like the middle.
Yeah, I do, too. Breaks it up a little.
I like.
All right. Middle's fine with me. Yeah. Was that your choice?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, it's your new Christmas tree, did you? You got to look at it during the daylight. I think Trump got the Christmas tree today.
Yeah. Do those come in sections like that, Fran? Where they're just plugged in?
Yeah, actually, they do. It's actually, I picked those, I had to talk with the contractor, we were going to use regular stones, but this here saves a lot of labor. It's much easier to, instead of doing each individual stone, so. And it's real stone, it's not fake, it's all real, it's just they put it together.
Thanks, Fran.
Thanks, Fran.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, next item, item C is a statement was prepared, the town attorney, on the issue of the propane decision, the legal case court matter. So, it was prepared, if you'd like, I can read that, it was prepared and posted on the website, and I can, I can read that for the benefit of the public if you would like.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So, this involves 40 Cyril Road, North Branford. The town has been advised that the appellate court reversed the decision of the trial court that dismissed the applicant's land use appeal and is directing the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve the applicant's application to locate bulk storage of propane at 40 Cyril Road. At the trial court, the town successfully persuaded the judge that under a Connecticut Supreme Court decision, even when a proposed development is permitted as of right, a Planning and Zoning Commission has discretion to inquire into specific matters, even if off-site, to make sure that the proposed site plan layout is safe. In reversing the trial court, the appellate court held that the town was limited to considering only onsite concerns. The town attorney will be meeting with Planning and Zoning Commission in executive session to review the decision and explore any remaining options. The deadline to file a petition for certification with the Connecticut Supreme Court is October 25, 2021. The town believes that even when something is permitted as of right, a Planning and Zoning Commission should have the ability to balance all concerns onsite and offsite to protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and to maintain a harmonious balance in land use. And that is the extent of the statement. So, again, that's posted on the website. There were calls and there were concerns about what would happen, and again, that'll be a decision that comes out of the Thursday's meeting with PNC.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. Community Events and Presentations?
Yeah, yeah, that, we're going to table that one. That was, I think I sent out an email that...
Okay, right. Yeah, I did see the email.
Table that.
Okay. Citizen's Statements and Petitions?
Bob Constantinople, 85 West Von Road. A lot of you people weren't here back in 2014 when Planning and Zoning approved this bulk propane. It was basically brought to the town supposedly by then-mayor Candelora, and Fuji, who was also on the town council, was his land that was being sold. Nobody knew about it, and when somebody at Planning and Zoning questioned it, they were replaced by the next meeting. People were put on just to pass the thing. It was a dirty thing then. The town, when they found out about it, was an uproar, and they went against it. It went on for years. Now, I'm asking you people, most of yous weren't here, the ones that were here knew what happened. Town didn't want it then, and we still don't want it. I hope that the town has our lawyer, fight it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. George Miller, 3 Dogwood Road, also in support of the town attorney, supporting the Planning and Zoning Commission for this appeal. I was involved with most of the matters of propane at the time. I fail to remember one single resident of North Branford, other than the property owner, who was in support of this. This is one of the most regrettable things that you could have done to the town as a council, as a Planning and Zoning Committee. So, I'm pleased that the Planning and Zoning Committee ultimately voted in support of the citizens, and I hope you'll continue to support them doing that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Kara Chris Molly. I'm an attorney at Baughner and Graves in New London, and I'm speaking on behalf of Paul Marino. He's at 52 Tommy's Path. I want to talk just a little bit about a small residential community off of Route 22, very busy road, as we all know. There's been information, belief that a permit's been issued, most recently within the past two weeks, to a resident also on Tommy's Path that has built two structures, and the permit, again, I have not seen the permit, so again, this is upon information and belief, but I want to bring it to your attention, to sell, to bring a commercial component into that small street, sell Christmas trees. The understanding from the permit is it's 500-plus Christmas trees. Not sure if it's going to happen this 2021 holiday season. I'm bringing this to your attention because there are concerns of the residents of that street, particularly with traffic control, particularly with children. There are at least 15 children under the age of 13 on that street. There's, Mr. Marino has three children under the age of 13. There's concerns with parking, and there's...
The deadline to file a petition for certification with the Connecticut Supreme Court is October 25th, 2021. The town believes that even when something is permitted as of right, a planning and zoning commission should have the ability to balance all concerns onsite and offsite, to protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and to maintain a harmonious balance in land use. And that is the extent of these statements. So again, that's, that's posted on the website. There were calls and there were concerns about what would happen. And again, it, that'll be a decision that comes out of the Thursday's meeting with PNC.
Okay. Thanks Mike. Community events and presentations?
Yeah, yeah, that, that, we're gonna table that one. That was, I think I sent out an email that.
Sorry. Yeah, I did see the email.
Table that.
Okay, citizen's statements and petitions?
Bob Constantinople, eighty-five West Van Road. A lot of you people weren't here back in 2014 when Planning and Zoning approved these bulk propane. It was basically brought to the town supposedly by then-mayor Candelora and Fucci, who was also on the town council, was his land that was being sold. Nobody knew about it. And when somebody at Planning and Zoning questioned it, they were replaced by the next meeting. People were put on just to pass the thing. It was a dirty thing then. Town, when they found out about it, was an uproar and they went against it. Went on for years. Now, I'm asking you people, most of yous weren't here, the ones that were here knew what happened. Town didn't want it then, and we still don't want it. I hope that the town has our lawyer, fight it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. George Miller, Three Dogwood Road. Also in support of the town attorney, supporting the Planning and Zoning Commission for this appeal. I was involved with most of the matters of propane at the time. I fail to remember one single resident of North Branford, other than the property owner, who was in support of this. This is one of the most regrettable things that you could have done to the town as a, as a council, as a Planning and Zoning Committee. So I'm pleased that the Planning and Zoning Committee ultimately voted in support of the citizens, and I hope you'll continue to support them doing that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Kara Chris Molly. I'm an attorney at Baughner and Graves in New London. And I'm speaking on behalf of Paul Marino. He's at fifty-two Tommy's Path. I wanna talk just a little bit about a small residential community off of Route twenty-two, very busy road, as we all know. There's been information, belief that a permit's been issued, most recently within the past two weeks, to a resident also on Tommy's Path that has built two structures. And the permit, again, I have not seen the permit, so again, this is upon information and belief, but I wanna bring it to your attention, to sell, to bring a commercial component into that small street, sell Christmas trees. The understanding from the permit is it's five hundred-plus Christmas trees. Not sure if it's gonna happen this 2021 holiday season. I'm bringing this to your attention because there are concerns of the residents of that street, particularly with traffic control, particularly with children. There are at least fifteen children under the age of thirteen on that street. There's, Mr. Marino has three children under the age of thirteen. There's concerns with parking, and there's concerns also with the area where you come out of. And I, I, I do civil litigation. I have personally represented someone that was in a very serious accident coming down twenty-two, and somebody was coming out of Tommy's Path and she broke her whole lower extremity. When you're coming out of that street and you're gonna take a left, it's a hard left to take. And when that street's busy, it's concerning. If there's a lot of traffic going in and out of that small street, on that one area, with concerns of parking, with concerns of children, and with concerns of just that turn when you go out, those are the concerns that we have. And what we're requesting that you approve and consider is a traffic control study of that area prior to allowing those Christmas trees and products to be sold on that street. And that's what we're requesting. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanna add that the street, I moved there from a busier town, and I moved there because the, the street was so quiet. It's, the street itself is eighteen to twenty feet wide. There's about fourteen houses on the street, ten of them oppose what they're trying to do over there. And I was lucky enough to have a, a town official meet me out there and take a walk on the street, just kinda visualize what I'm talking about, so maybe he can get the feel and bring it to you guys. And you know, as we were out there, this gentleman abruptly approached us, just, just within an hour, and in sort of a threatening way, raised his voice to the town official and said, "If you have any questions, you ask me." And he said it again to him, which alarmed me, because he was a town official, no longer. So my concern is, is this town official trying to use his ex-town officialism or his employeeism to maybe lean on the official who was with me and then maybe you guys or people in the past? So I just want a fair shake, just want the neighborhood looked at. I would strongly suggest, if you guys could even take a ride down there, it's only down the road, and just see what I'm talking about. There's only two streetlights on this road. At the time that they would be selling these, there is, there's gonna be no light down there. And all the houses on the street are opposed. There's nowhere to turn around, there's nowhere to park. Even if he puts a, a parking lot in his property, we're still gonna have an influx of traffic coming back and forth. And then, God forbid, in the event, there's a, somebody has to go down there in a firetruck or ambulance or something, there's, they're not gonna fit. The road is not wide enough. So I just wanna have it looked at and kinda go from there. And, and just put it on record that the person there is, is, you know, I don't know if it's threatening to call the police threatening, but it's definitely, if you talk to the gentleman who was with me, he'll definitely tell you it felt not right, something's not right. And if you're not doing anything wrong, why would you do that? And I'm just concerned, along with the rest of the residents on the street. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Elaine Artwork, Squire Drive, North Branford, Connecticut. I'd like to know what you plan to do about the propane project? Because we do not want it in our neighborhood. We fought against it and we won. And what do you plan to do as our town representatives to stop this project?
If I, if I may, Ben, can you just explain for the people that are unaware, maybe watching at home or are here, how that process works?
Certainly. So there was a, there was an appeal taken from the decision of the zoning commission denying the application. That appeal was taken to the Superior Court. We represented the town at the trial court level, which the trial judge agreed with the town's position at, at that time and dismissed the applicant's appeal. The applicant took an appeal to the appellate court. The appellate court reversed the findings of the trial court, finding that an earlier action of the zoning commission adopting a regulation that permitted the propane facility to be located at the subject property, and then the subsequent reversal of that act after an application had already been filed, did not prevent the applicant from proceeding with its plans of installing a propane facility. We had argued at the trial court that the zoning commission's denial was based upon offsite concerns for the public health, safety, and welfare. And we based that argument, which we knew was a difficult argument to prevail upon, but we based that on a Supreme Court decision that, that we were able to at least hook into. And at this point, now that the appellate court reversed the, the trial court, the last option for the town is to seek certification by the Connecticut Supreme Court, which is, is rarely granted in these types of situations, because you have to recognize, in this type of an administrative proceeding, the zoning commission is like the trial court, the trial court is like the appellate court, and the appellate court is like the Supreme Court. So for the, the Supreme Court to now review this matter again, it's rare. It's not unheard of, but it's rare. And we will discuss this matter with the zoning commission, because ultimately that is the body that has the authority to continue the, the, the litigation in this matter. And if they instruct us to file a petition for certification, we will file it. And one of the things that we can argue is, under this past legislative session, the legislature did amend, I think it was Public Act twenty-one, twenty-nine, I think, where they did amend section eight dash two of the Connecticut general statutes to allow a zoning commission, in some instances, to consider offsite impacts to certain development. So what we could argue potentially is that there's a change in the legislatures, in the legislation, that now there's a allowance of offsite impacts to, to a development. And so therefore, the action of the zoning commission should be reinstated. So that's, that's kinda where we are. If this, if the Connecticut Supreme Court denies certification, then there's nothing further that the town can do to prevent this development from coming in, as a matter of legal process. There is, I believe there's another piece of litigation that's going on that's not specifically related to whether or not the development can come in, but that's kinda where we stand and that's kind of the process up to this moment in time.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question, Ms.?
I'd just like to know why we weren't notified as residents of this town that all this was going on.
I can only say that everything is a matter of, has been a matter of public record. The appeal is on the judicial website. It has, the, the town's success at the trial court wasn't necessarily publicized, but was a matter of public record at the trial court. What has happened at the appellate court is also a matter of public record. So it hasn't been published per se as a matter of update, but I believe as we've gotten decisions in, we've notified the council during public, public session.
What the lady's saying is nobody let the people know.
Exactly.
Nobody told us.
Exactly.
You're supposed to be on Route Thirty-Seventy. You're supposed to be protecting us.
Thank you guys. I think you guys missed a little piece of that. It falls on the zoning commission. To be quite honest, until this came out, I wasn't aware of it either. So until, until this was recently, this recently came out, I was not aware of it either. So, I mean, it falls back on the zoning commission, which is why I had our town attorney go through.
What our town attorney is saying though is, everything is public record, right? Let me ask him a question. Does he know what an auto mechanic's doing on his car? It's not his business. He doesn't follow that. Well, the citizens don't follow the court dockets either, I'll tell you the truth, okay? So if something like this came out, I think the town should've notified us.
Exactly.
Ben, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Since the town council appoints the people on the zoning commission, and if the zoning commission decided not to pursue, continue with the court case, does the town council have any power because they, they point to the people who are on the zoning commission? Could they, could the town council, if the zoning commission decided not to pursue it, can the town council pursue it because we have appointed the people on the zoning commission? I'm just curious in terms of.
I, I wanna take a look at the charter, but I mean, generally speaking, as a body, you do have oversight over all the other boards and commissions. And if you felt that there was inappropriate action being done at another body, that's something that could be subject of review of this body, and inappropriate action could potentially.
So it would be in the charter somewhere?
Yeah. And I, I think it would be under your general oversight. But I think you, I, again, I would caution you, when you appoint people to these positions, unless there's conduct that is, you know, completely arbitrary, capricious, illegal, I mean, you're, you know, you're, people are exercising presumably their judgment and their good judgment in their decision-making process. And you don't wanna necessarily send a message to people who volunteer to be appointed on these bodies that we're going, that if we don't, if you don't do what we say or what we want, you're, we're gonna just remove you.
Like they did in two thousand and fourteen.
That, that would be something that I think could affect proper government. So if you find that what they're doing is inappropriate, illegal, then I think action is appropriate. But, so you'd have to balance what it is. But it will be our recommendation that they file a petition for certification.
Not just looking for information, that's all.
Absolutely.
Joanne Consiglio, Crossfield Road, North Branford. Twenty, in twenty-fourteen, when we fought this, it was deemed that there, this wasn't a good fit for our town, because there are two schools down the road, there are two gas stations within half a mile of, of the proposed site, there's a church with a daycare right across the street, and there's a library. And there are hundreds of single-family homes, all in the area, not to mention Evergreen Woods, and they deemed that there was no way they could get all those elderly people out in time. Not to mention all the traffic. That is on Route eighty, and then all those big trucks coming in. And the biggest thing was, our fire department, our little North Branford Fire Department is not equipped to handle a big catastrophe that that could possibly become. All you have to do is go on Google and type in propane tank explosions, the big ones, not little ones, the big ones, and see what could happen. So we are totally against this and we will fight this again. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bob Fortino, eleven Brook Road. I just wanna take you all the way back to the beginning and how we heard about this for the first time. It was told to me that there is nothing you could do about it. It's already been settled, it's been voted on, and there's nothing that people could do. And I was asking, why can't they just have a vote through all the people in North Branford, see if they want it? And what I was told is it's a done deal. And that's how I and a number of my friends found out about this the first time.
My name is Joseph Vida. I live at eleven North Street. And I wanna echo the concerns of my neighbors. Going back to twenty-fourteen, you know, speaking of matters of public record, it wasn't a matter of public record when the Planning and Zoning Commission amended the regulations to allow for bulk propane storage at Cyril Road. No one knew about it back then. And then, and then, then there was an applicant, right there, to make an application for such a project. I live in the area that was just described, across from the congregational church and the We Care Daycare Center. We hashed this out over and over and over again, back in twenty-fourteen. I'm not gonna go through it again, but I hope that the zoning commission does file a petition as the town attorney described.
Thank you. Any other, any other comments?
This is not on that topic.
No, it doesn't have to be.
Okay. Yes, my name is Jack McCoy, twenty-eight Masswood Drive, North Branford. Longtime residence, rose all my children here. I spoke last month on the Interest Informing Committee on Broadband, so I wanted to bring that to your attention again. Still looking for volunteers to join me. I also would like to note that West Hartford and East Hartford are making the press on the subject, where they are trying to do a very similar kind of thing. I think, West Haven, I'm sorry, West Haven and, and East Haven, East Hartford are doing similar projects. But I think it'd be important to our community, and if anybody knows of volunteers, please reach me through the town manager or through myself. I have a little one-page poster. I put it at Bobby's barber shop, and I've given the town manager a picture. It has my phone number on the bottom, so it's a way of contacting me, and I'm trying to help us get off the ground here with this. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Resignations and appointments? Update on North Farm's fence?
Yes, that matter, we, we received a communication from the surety, asking us to provide the surety with.
You know, just if you don't mind, I don't feel the hearing. Okay, thanks.
So we received communication from the surety after I advised the surety that the project was not completed as its insurer had instructed them. And I detailed specifically what was omitted and what needed to be corrected. The surety responded by asking us to provide it with a, with the estimates that we were receiving from a third-party contractor to finalize, fix and finalize the project. And I believe we are close to, to securing that third-party vendor to, we're gonna have a conversation tomorrow when I'm in town hall to hopefully get that third-party contractor on board by getting a, an estimate to functionally go through the entire fence and correct the fence ties, to make sure that they're all properly installed, to replace the carriage bolts, which should all be no greater than the length of an inch and a quarter, their and gary lengths right now, to fix the south gate, the hinges on the south gate, and to install a fence on the north gate. That's functionally what needs to be done in order to finalize this project. Once we have that estimate, we'll send it to the surety and see what the surety's response is. You know, I think, I had said at a prior meeting, we're targeting, should try to be done with this by Halloween, and I think we might make that. So, but hopefully we'll get this off your agenda by, now we have to say thanks.
Thank you. Award RFQ slash P number four, two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, clerk of the works for the new North Branford Police Department. Are we tabling that?
Yeah, that's, that's a state table.
C two? Review of proposed amendment for intermunicipal animal control agreement?
That's still ongoing. I did speak with the First Selectman, Jimmy Cosgrove. We're working to get back to the table next week, or via Zoom, whatever works for us, to start conveying your concerns back to them and see if we can't come to a better understanding in terms of structure of the deal. So, ongoing.
And thank you for sending those updates statistics. I see that they are often four to thirteen times the number of animals that North Bran, that they process for North Branford, so thank you for that.
Yeah, sure.
Review and discussion on draft two thousand and twenty-one, proposed resolution adopting an ordinance regulating cannabis?
Right, so we, we moved at the last meeting to come back with the language is there before you in terms of modifying section eighty-eight, thirteen H. And there's also a prepared suggested motion to move this item for a public hearing, to set that public hearing up for the next meeting at, at seven thirty, as part of the regular town council meeting on the nineteenth. at 7:30, as part of the regular town council meeting on the 19th.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion. I move that the town council set a public hearing date for October 19th, 2021, at 7:30, on the proposed ordinance 2021-1, entitled Parks and Recreation Commission, Parks and Recreation Areas.
Second.
Any discussion?
I, no, I was, it's so, it's so brief, that I think somebody could, a member could potentially read that the, this isn't, this isn't a new section, this is amending the section, and might be worthwhile to just, I know that's prepared, I'm trying to get to that section, but if somebody wants to pull that up to read, I think that would be helpful for the public's knowledge.
Okay, so, I'll read the way it, right now, the rules of, it's under 88-13, Rules of Conduct, letter H, and the current regulation or ordinance reads, alcoholic beverages, controlled dangerous substances, alms, gambling. While in a public park or recreation area, all persons shall conduct themselves in a proper and orderly manner, and in particular, no person shall bring alcoholic beverages or controlled dangerous substances, drink or use the same at any time, nor shall any person be under the influence of intoxicating liquor or a controlled dangerous substance in a park or recreation area. So that's the current ordinance, and the proposed change would read, is proposed as prohibited activities. While in a public park or recreation area, all persons shall conduct themselves in a proper and orderly manner, and in particular, no person shall, one, be under the influence of drugs and/or alcohol, or possess, drink, smoke, burn, light, consume, or use at any time any of the following: A, alcoholic beverages; B, cigarettes, cigars, pipes, or similar devices, whether containing wholly or in part tobacco and/or cannabis, including but not limited to electronic delivery systems or vapor products containing tobacco and/or cannabis. For purposes of this ordinance, all terms used in this ordinance, unless otherwise stated, shall have the same meaning as the definition set forth in the Connecticut General Statutes, as the saying may be amended. C, illegal drug and controlled substances being used without a prescription.
Thanks, Rose.
Do you want the on-favor or roll call?
On-favor, thanks, good.
On-favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
QA and M, proposal on brick masonry work for NBIS referral to Permanent Project Building Committee?
Right, I just brought this back, it's just a minor tweak, and I thought it was important, because it's already been referred, and they're taking it up, but they, I went to look back, it was, you know, primarily masonry work, and what we're looking at is obviously a roof, massive roof project, so this is just, it's just a formality of just kind of referring it back to, to say that it is a roof project as well, it's not just masonry and water infiltration and masonry, it's a, now, a roof project as well. So I just thought we'd correct that and send that to them. And then, as we said in Al's presentation, we'll hopefully get, and we can have Rusty back here, hopefully, if his schedule permits, back on the 19th, to talk about and getting some information on the structural engineering analysis and costs for the, for that.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion, be it hereby resolved, that in accordance with Chapter 73 of the Town of North Branford Code of Ordinances, the town council refers the NBIS brick/masonry/roof project to the Permanent Project Building Committee, which shall be responsible in overseeing the construction of said project, and shall give the town manager status reports of the project on a regular basis. The town manager shall keep the town council advised on these status reports. The committee may make recommendations to the town council on any phase of said project.
One second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Aye.
Abstained? Opposed?
Okay, under new business, review of draft fraud policy?
This is a draft, I think I presented it to Finance initially, and Councilor Moreno has gone through and modified it to some more legally appropriate language, and I could have a motion on the next agenda, if you'd like to adopt it, if you want to take some time to review it, and I could have it back on the next agenda for a motion to adopt it.
Is this a modification of an existing one, or is this new?
Brand new.
Brand new.
Brand new. We had one drafted back in 2005 that I found never got passed by the council, and as Councilor Delone had mentioned last time, the auditors are looking for this as a new standard.
Okay.
So we didn't have one. I drafted one based on other towns, sent it to the good counselor, and he hacked the heck out of it and made a whole new policy.
Fine job, fine job.
All right, thanks.
Well, I'm glad that it went to the town attorney before it came to us, so that we don't have to keep going through that stuff, so that's...
Don't have to ask a question.
Right, so it's a good thing.
All right. Update on American Rescue Plan?
Yeah, so additional information, we started the process in our last conversation, last meeting, so I've kind of just kind of reiterated what we're talking about in terms of definitions. Obviously, the most flexible is that issue on replacement of lost revenue, that the council could choose to do. So I kind of broke it down with eligibility and categories of potential projects, first being item one, the nonprofits can pass money through to nonprofits. You can, you know, decide to do that, decide not to do that, but you might want to add also a process for having a nonprofit provide their, you know, financials, or make a presentation, or what have you. Again, with the example I used there, I've already heard from Tucutta Historical Society, and they make a compelling case that they weren't open, could not have the fundraisers, couldn't do that, struggling to keep the doors open. That could certainly be, and is eligible, could be one of your, could be, could be on your list to do as part of the ARPA. Two was replacement of lost revenue, which is quite flexible and allow you to do a multitude of projects, NBIS renovation project in terms of one we just talked about with the brick, masonry, and roof project as one, the high school project with the bidirectional. I also added the list at the end, and I apologize, Go Bay made it in about five-point font that's fairly noticeable, but readable, but those are some of the items that the, that's the list that the Permanent Project Building Committee is going to be working off, and certainly the bidirectional is eligible under the security feature of a high school. The, you know, roads, bridges, unidentified projects at this moment, but as infrastructure, cybersecurity also, and public safety, if you look at the definition under lost revenue. So there are some opportunities there to continue to work and identify projects. Item three is the outdoor space, investments to improve outdoor space, including parks, eligible use of funds for health and emergency, you know, to combat the negative impacts of COVID. So some of the ideas there, obviously Poco Festival grounds, we talked about the storage barn, pole, storage barn estimate that Fran is working on in terms of amenities for the park grounds, if you will, festival grounds, potentially rec department looking at, you know, Frisbee Golf Course, amphitheater improvements, you know, upgrading electrical could be another thing, could be multitude of things that happen with that. And then, of course, your water infrastructure plan for Forest Road, 2.6 million, if the public police department lands in that area on Forest Road, you benefit both Public Works and Police. Sewer infrastructure along Route 80 and the Guilford Line, still could be identified in terms of cost, but also could be taken out of another pot of money. So the last one is Broadband, and we've heard from Jack McCoy, who's looking to put together a committee, but just giving you some food for thought and to stimulate some of the ideas that you might want to think about and ask for more additional information and costs that we can come up with for any particular project you think might fit or might want to put on the list.
So Mike, is there any downside of you going this, going that option of lost revenue? I know there's an upside, but is there a downside?
I don't see the downside, other than when we get into it, and I do want to note Anthony's memo from Martin Heff about the extension of reporting. So the downside in terms of reporting could, I mean, that could take some time administratively, but like anything else in tracking a grant or something like that, I don't think it's going to be overly burdensome for us to do that, given that this is, you know, funds coming from the feds, and we're the projects that we want to do, so.
Okay.
I don't see any downside at this point.
Okay. Citizens' statement and petition? Is there anything on any of the websites or anything?
No comments.
No.
Well, I have a question, while we're in the public comment section. We had talked about, I think I gave you the, or Councilor Diamond had mentioned the ordinance in regulating pocket bikes, mini bikes, dirt bikes, all-terrain vehicles, and the like. So do you want to just hold this for, I mean, we have one, one more meeting on the 19th, and then, and then it's a new council after that. Do you want to prepare and kick this around for the 19th, or just defer to no comment?
Want to just do it the 19th?
Yeah, I mean, we can.
How's the agenda looking? Do we now?
Yeah.
It'll be fuller than tonight, I think, yeah.
And we'll have executive session on the 19th also.
Yeah.
For the town manager's evaluation, so.
I think maybe put it off. This way, it's fresh in the new council, everybody's here, can see it from start to finish.
Yeah, because this existing council isn't going to be able to take action on it, and I agree with you, it's, we might as well just start with the new council.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have anything?
The only reason I wanted to push it, kind of push it through, is it is an issue right now. You know, the bikes are...
We wouldn't be able to do the, we wouldn't be able to settle it on the 19th. That's, that's the issue, is that we wouldn't settle it on that night. We can't, and so then, we would have to just bring everyone else, the new council, up to speed on it, so we might as well just start fresh in November.
Makes sense.
All right, thank you.
Motion with chair?
So moved. Second.
Okay. I don't know what to do with all this free time.